Good evening. This is June the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Board of Alderman Meeting is hereby called to order. I remind those in attendance, as well as those participating, that this is live streamed on YouTube and available on the city's YouTube channel for playback. Those of us with microphones, the microphone should be on green for being heard so the audience can hear anything we're saying when we're speaking and on red when we're not speaking. With that in mind, I'd like to ask Alderman Gil Earhart to lead our invocation, and I'll lead a pledge of allegiance after that. Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Most gracious God and Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, for this weather that we're having today and the sunshine. Lord, who come together tonight and just pray that hallowed be your name, that your keenness will come on this earth and your will be done for your honor and glory. Lord, there's a lot of unrest in this country, a lot of unrest in the world, and I just pray that your hand would be among those in the middle of it all, that sometimes we don't get our way, but rather than resorting to violence, that we would come to the table and work things out in an appropriate way with righteousness and fairness. And Lord, I pray too, that those of us in leadership would continue to be humble, ask for your wisdom and guidance as we make decisions, whether it's locally, nationally, or worldwide. Lord, as I go through this night, we want to thank you for Joy Henderson and her service. This will be our last meeting tonight. We appreciate her and what she's done for her city and her constituents, and that you bless her continued retirement years with joy and with peace and happiness. Lord, I pray for Don Gammidge as he steps in that seat, that he would have a heart of servanthood and humility as he guides his citizens in that position. Lord, thank you for those who serve this city. Continue to bless us with your hand of peace and with prosperity, and bless the decisions we make tonight. For it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Be seated. Ms. Stewart, would you conduct the roll call?
Aldridge. Collins.
Here.
Dickerson.
Here.
Earhart.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
All present, so obviously a quorum's established. It's been mentioned in the invocation, but I do call our attention to our team member, Alderwoman Joy Henderson. It is your last meeting, but not last teamwork with us to keep making the city better. Just a couple of things I take you back to. Alderwoman Henderson won the runoff for Ward Three to take her husband, the late Harold Henderson's Alderman seat in March of two thousand and sixteen. You were quoted in the paper, and the paper says that you said, so it's probably close to right if the paper said it. The paper said, you said, "I'm very excited and grateful and thankful for all the support," Henderson said Wednesday. "This was started to fill Harold's vacancy after his death, and I think a lot of my support came from people respecting him and helping me to honor him, so I'm very thankful we got that much support." That was back in March of two thousand and sixteen. Henderson went on to say that she likes the way the city of Oliver Branch is going and the way it looks, and is looking forward to the continued process. Quote, "I love the way Oliver Branch has been growing. We have great places to shop now, and we have all the stores, new stores and new restaurants. I love where we've come from. I think we've done well." Alderwoman Henderson, thank you for serving so well from March of six, March of two thousand and sixteen to June of two thousand and twenty-five. Nine years and five months of dedication to the citizens of Ward Three and to the people of the city of Oliver Branch. Thank you very much. And at Alderwoman Hamilton's recommendation, we have a devotional for you that's signed by city staff and your peer board members for you to remember as keepsake.
Oh, that would be very special to me. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Do you would like to say anything?
No, I, well, Sunday our preacher said something about you being the turtle on the fence post, and I thought that's kind of how it was. When I started, I really had a lot of help getting to be Alderman, so, you know, it was helpful from all of y'all and all my friends and family and the Lord, so I'm very grateful for that.
Thank you very much. Continue with the agenda. You have the regular meeting minutes of June the third. Any questions, comments, or motions on the June the third, two thousand and twenty-five minutes? Motion by Mr. Collins to approve June third, twenty twenty-five minutes. Is there a second? Second Alderwoman Henderson. Any discussion? All in agreement?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's update. I pretty much covered everything other than congratulations to Alderwoman Jan Aldridge for her seven-year work anniversary on the twenty-second of this month that's around the corner, so congratulations as well. And Board, you have some information in the packet about the public hearing for the Center Hill Water Reclamation Facility that's been heard at the county level at the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, and will, is continued until next month for hopefully a final decision on that reclamation center for the east side of DeSoto County. It's on their agenda for next month. A little bit of information in there for you. If you have questions at a later date, just let me know. Consent agenda. You have that before you. Items one through twenty-seven, items one through twenty-seven. Twenty-nine? Updated copy, excuse me, twenty-nine. I had the previous copy. Items one through twenty-nine. Any, any questions on these items? Or any motions? Mr. Wallace, motion to approve. Is there a second? Second Alderwoman. Aldridge, okay. Alderwoman Aldridge. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Calling Planning Commission, new business. This is consideration of application for a final plat for Taylor Estates submitted by Byron Houston of Houston Engineering, P L L C. On behalf of property owners Billy Hall and Dorothy Lowry, the request is to create eight residential lots from fifteen point zero to plus or minus acres. The subject property is Zoned A R Agricultural Residential District. It is located at the southeast corner of Davidson Road and State Line Road East. Staff report.
Speak louder, Song. Speak louder.
Mayor Alderman, the request before you is to consider a final subdivision plat for the division of an eighteen point zero-two acre piece of property located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Davidson Road and State Line Road. The property is currently vacant, and the property owner intends to subdivide that to create a detached single-family residential lots. The property is Zoned A R Agricultural Residential, which requires that lot to be minimum one acre in size. So all the lots are proposed meet that particular requirement as we see on the next slide. Regarding the availability of utilities, there's an eight-inch seawall line along Davidson Road. We also have a false main, four-inch false main in the vicinity of this property. Water is also available. Although this is A R O district and the lots are at least one point five acre in size, because these seawall line and other utilities are available, the developer will be required to extend those utilities to service each of these lots. Other infrastructure, streets are available. There is no variance, no deviation from the requirements of the subdivision regulations requested. Sidewalks are not required in the A R O district. This is the subdivision plat as proposed. The future land use map designates it as suburban neighborhood. From the Planning Commission, actually this was done today, the civil engineer, surveyor working on this Byron Houston, they are to update this plat to reflect the right-of-way, two point zero-three acres for the expansion of State Line Road and Davidson Road, especially at this intersection. So that has been shown on this, on this particular plat as presented before you. There is a significant ditch that goes down, kind of traverses Lot Seven, Lot Six, and lies on parts of Lot Five and Lot Four. Because of that ditch, it's important that the finished floor elevation for each of these lots be indicated on, on the lots to avoid any flooding of homes that may be built on this side. The Planning Commission reviewed this plat at its meeting on June tenth and unanimously recommended approval subject to these conditions one to seven, which are pretty standard. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Song. I, Board, any questions regarding the staff report? Any questions? Does applicant have anything else to add? Or the representative for the applicant, Mr. Houston, anything else to add? Okay, thank you. Board, any questions for the applicant's representative, Mr. Houston? Any questions or motions?
Mayor, I see no issues with this, pretty much straight up subdividing for A R lots, so I'd make recommendation to support the Planning Commission and approve it.
Mr. Earhart, motion to approve. Second, Ms. Hamilton. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Houston. Safe driving back to Oxford. Yes, sir. New business continued. Consideration of application for a final plat for Caroline's Corner Subdivision submitted by Everett West. West Surveying LLC on behalf of property owners Miranda Straffus Collins, Miranda Marie Bridle, Mark Straffus, and Carolyn Straffus. The request is to create a single commercial lot of zero point nine-five-two plus or minus acres. The subject property is Zoned C Three General Commercial District and is located at the southeast corner of Goodman Road East and Highway one seventy-eight known as ninety-three sixty-nine Goodman Road. Report, please.
Mayor Alderman, before you is a request to consider a finer plat for this single parcel. It exists already. This is Miranda Bridle just across the street, right down here. This is Goodman Road East. Highway one seventy-eight, you have the railway. Right at that corner, there's a piece of property we are looking at. The parcel, as I did mention, it's a building already on, on the piece of property. It exists as a parcel, but not platted as a subdivision lot. It's on C Three General Commercial District. The reason why this plating is necessary is because the property owner intends to make some beautiful improvements on this site, really. They intend to build, they call it a greenhouse. This really doesn't look like a greenhouse, at least for me. To give room for some, you know, this is a brighter place. Folks may want to go in there, kind of like a little event location, take some pictures regarding weddings or so, and then build this beautiful fountain area outside just for more pictures, kind of beautify that whole area. That is the intent. And to be able to get a building permit to put up this structure, they have to plot the property. That's why the subdivision plat is before you, is to be able to enable them, get a building permit to put up this structure. The Planning Commission reviewed this application at its meeting on June tenth. It meets all the requirements with regard to subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance, except that the existing building, being in the C Three zoning district, the existing building does not meet the minimum front yard setback requirements, but it's, it's noncon, it's a legal nonconforming, so to speak. It's already there. And so this plat will kind of recognize those setbacks and permit them to continue existing. There are also no sidewalks along Goodman Road. So condition number four seeks to waive the requirements in the front, direct frontage of this property on Goodman Road is there are no sidewalks. So condition number four provides that construction of sidewalks along all Goodman Road frontage of the property be waived. And condition number five, setbacks for the existing building on the property are hereby permitted as they are at the time of approval of this plat. If the building were demolished in the future, in future, a new building on the lot shall be required to meet applicable setback requirements. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Song. Any questions, Board?
I do have one just clarification. You may have said this, I may have missed it, but it's beautiful, the setup. When you say pictures, there'll be weddings maybe possibly at this location?
I think Miranda is, yeah, she can.
Hi. Miranda. Do I need to come up there?
Yes, you're welcome to. Come up or several, both of you, either way. The question is, would you have weddings and receptions or just weddings?
Well, I'm kind of getting toward, is, will this be an event center? Will there be music or anything that we have to deal with?
So there, there won't be any, like, loud receptions?
You'll do fine.
Yes, I'm Miranda Straffus Collins, twelve seventy-five Lee Road, Bahalia, Mississippi. So to answer your question, this, it's mainly for photo shoot opportunities, small elopements. This is not a big reception hall by any means. It would be for small parties to have, like, an intimate ceremony with, like, a nice dinner afterwards, possibly.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That, that was my main concern.
Any other question?
The location, I remember the open house, maybe a couple of years ago, and y'all have done wonderful with it, or you've done wonderful, so I hope it continues to thrive. Any, any other questions from the Board?
I've got one. I agree with you. I hope it succeeds a hundred percent. My question always on the road, are we getting any more right-of-way, I mean, from the road? I mean, I'm just wondering, not that we're planning on widening it, but one day it may be widened. Maybe not in my lifetime, but that's what I'm wondering, do we, do we recapture, you know, some of the right-of-way or not?
Maybe Mr. Swims.
It doesn't affect your business, but it might.
Well, in front of this property, it shows that there is a total of eighty feet right-of-way.
What?
In front of this property, it shows a total right-of-way being eighty feet wide in front of this property.
Okay. And, and we did talk about that. We talked a little bit about the number of people that are in and out that kind of played into it a lot about the decisions about whether there would be any issues with traffic. From, from the perspective that we got from the proposal, there was not anything significant that, that, that would require.
You say, I'm not worried about it now. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it. I was just thinking about the future. You know, we normally try to, you know, get the right-of-way when we can and get dedicated, and it may be in y'all's lifetime, it might get widened, but, you know, it wouldn't be lost to you. I'm not trying to spend your money on anything. But that was my question. So I know farther out, you know, we've looked at widening it for a long time, but it's just too costly, but sometime in the future, somebody might do that.
If, if I'm looking at it correctly, along Goodman Road right there, it's an eighty-foot right-of-way. So right now, we have a three-lane, I'm not sure exactly what the pavement width, so that should be more like thirty-six feet. But if you did try to widen it out, add bike lanes or add additional lanes or so forth, sixty-foot would be required for five lanes total. If you wanted, if you were gonna go into something that far, you'd still have enough for a five-foot grass strip and a five-foot sidewalk. You could still make something like that work with an eighty-foot right-of-way, so we didn't, we didn't ask for additional right-of-way through that area.
Okay. But I knew when Pat would talk about sidewalk had, but it's right now too costly. But it, okay, I'm fine with it.
It, it is costly. And from hearing from that street, nobody really wants to give up an inch for the sidewalk to go into play.
I mean, it's been one, a few times we have, and without us, nobody wants to give up anything. Plus, it's too costly right now.
Would, would we address that, Mr. Swims, if we went back later, we'd have to just address all the property owners, regardless of what side of the street is, to why that, we just have to visit that as a group? Go to each individual owner?
Well, as far as how we would look at it, if we were trying to widen it through that entire area.
Sidewalk, bike lane, or to widen it?
Yeah, it would just be something, we'd need to, I guess, step back and do a master plan of some type to try to look at the entire area. I mean, we've looked at it before about what some of the needs are for old Goodman Road, mainly from the perspective of, of sidewalks and so forth, making it more pedestrian friendly, but, but we haven't looked at today since I've been here trying to widen it out to any more than three lanes than it is. But we could certainly revisit that if, if that's something the Board chooses for us to look at.
Thank you.
Yeah, our discussions with the city has been adding sidewalks or back lanes or something, not riding it with a wire, but that's why I brought that question up. But anyway, it looks beautiful. I hope it succeeds for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Any other questions, Board members?
I just want to comment that we're glad to have you in Oliver Branch. This is beautiful, and it'll be a beautiful asset to that area.
Thank you. I take a lot of pride in our old home there, so I appreciate that.
I want to be, because at night, when you have your, that window open in the light on, it's just so great.
Thank you so much.
Any questions or motions? Mr. Dixon, motion to approve. Second, Mr. Wallace. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. It passed?
Thank you.
I know. Following the agenda, public hearing, this is a public hearing date for consideration and action on a motion declaring the condition of the following properties to be amendments to the public health and safety and directing either the city staff or contract labor to clean the property forthwith? So that would be the third one. Is it, is it A R with crops, or is it a field that these cut in?
That has, to my knowledge, and Ms. Joy lives down that way, but to my knowledge, that's not been cultivated in years and years.
Well, it's been sold too.
Okay, I, I wasn't, that's what I guess I was doing.
It, it has been sold, and I think when Hank Drayton, Officer Drayton, looked at that, he was viewing it based on what was surrounding. You have your city public works complex here, and we have a church across the street, and Hank's constantly going to that church to make sure that they've got their grass mowed, and so maybe the folks at the church pointed across the street and said, hey, you should get that done as well. So I don't think it's been harvested, and there is a new owner, I believe, as Alderwoman Henderson mentioned, so that's why it's on the list. We do, we probably have a property maintenance code case as well coming on that due to the condition of the house that's on there, so. It is, it is Zoned A R, so. Well, you know, typically, if, if there's active harvesting going on, you know, on an A R property, particularly if it's vacant, you know, you could interpret the rules to allow it to be, you know, used in that manner and not enforce the grass regulations. Usually if there's a house on it or a business on the property, and they say, hey, we don't want to cut the grass because we're, we want to harvest this, is hay, usually they don't qualify under what it says in our code, the specific language.
The tractor and bush hog appearing to be in op has been out in the weather near the barn for about a month now, so. Is anyone here associated with this property?
Is anyone here associated with this property? Or while I'm at it, is anyone here associated with any of these properties that you came to the board meeting tonight on behalf of the property or to speak against the property? Anything to, anybody here to add anything to these properties? Okay. Yes, sir.
There hasn't been any change in the condition of any of the other four that are on the list since the original packets went out. So I've just thumbed through all of the pictures and we do have high grass on all of the, uh, all of the properties. So the, based on the pictures, um, the staff would recommend that you would declare the condition of the properties to be a menace to public health and safety and then direct the city staff to, uh, con, you know, get some contract labor to clean them.
Thank you, Mr. Gambon. Any questions, board, or any motions? I'll close the public hearing, although it wasn't officially opened. But if there's no one here to speak, either way, the public hearing will be closed. Are any motions on these? Motion, Collins, second, Wallace. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Continuing the agenda on old business. No, that's okay. If that part of the slide's not available, we can just take them in order, uh, the way I've got them. The first one is May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five bids. We're open for the multi-use path and pedestrian bridge project from the George Harrison Soccer Complex.
Yes, sir, that was one of the projects we're excited about seeing happen. It's over where we're trying to, to build the new soccer fields. We're gonna have a multi-use path that's gonna go along the, the rear of it up from the lake and actually cross, across, uh, a creek. If you, once that gets constructed, I think y'all will see what a benefit it'll be for the city of Alder Branch. We had three different bidders on this project. We had a, um, one bid that was actually disqualified because it was considered a strip bid. In other words, the entire bid package was not turned in when we, when it was, when the project was, was, um, up for bidding. We had a good bid come in, Alexander Construction, with a bid of one million seventy-four thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. And just to make y'all aware, Grinder, Tabor Grinder was actually the one that had, they came back and protested because we didn't open their bid. We went through a series of, uh, conversations, emails, and so forth, back and forth with them. This was a, um, a M DOT project, an L P A project. They do not allow you to open the bid unless everything is in there, uh, fully returned. It was clearly stated, uh, once we explained that to them, they withdrew their protest. So we didn't have any further issues, uh, with that. So I think that was settled. So we are recommending that we move forward with Alexander Construction with the low bid that, that was received. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Yes, so they're the ones that's actually building the soccer fields. So, so they were hoping to get the project.
Mr. Swims, if you recall, is this a eighty-twenty? I know a grant's involved in this pedestrian trail.
I think that's correct.
I believe it's eighty-twenty. So board, this would go from soccer fields down to Ross Road South. And a bridge would be needed to get over one of the little bodies of water between the two. And eventually all the way to Craft Road would be the next goal. But this would get us to, uh, Ross Road South. Low bid recommended at one million seventy-four thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Yes, sir.
Now make a motion to accept the bid from Alexander Construction.
Mr. Earhart motion to accept the bid from Alexander. Is there a second? Mr. Collins, second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a bid opening for a gas regulator station. Only one bid was received and this is, it is recommended that, uh, that we reject this bid and, and rebid due to only one bid being received and that bid being considerably higher than what was budgeted. So the request is for the board to reject the bid and allow engineering to rebid. Mr. Wallace, motions. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Dickerson. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, June the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five bid opening for Apron Rehabilitation Phase Two Project at the airport was held. One bid was open from Phillips Contracting Company Incorporated. Staff recommends rejecting this bid and advertise, re-advertising due to the bid being non-responsive as outlined. So recommendations for the board to reject and allow this to be rebid also. Motion to rebid by Mr. Collins. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Show fire station next. Thank you. Continuing, uh, June the ninth bid opening for the taxiway rehabilitation phase two project. One bid was, was received from Phillips Contracting Incorporated in the amount indicated below. Staff recommends tabling this bid until the grant is received from the F A A. That's a, a requirement that we have to have this bid in place. But we have to receive the grant before we can go forward with this bid. So the request is to table it to a date uncertain until the grant offer is received from the F A A. Mr. Dickerson motion. Second, Mr. Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Fire station number six, somewhat similar. This was a, a bid opening and, as you could imagine, very voluminous bids came in for this fire station. And staff is asking that we table this item until the next board meeting on July one so the bids can be evaluated and, uh, and a decision made. Mr. Wallace motion. Second, Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New business. This involves a proposal from the pick, Pickering Engineering Firm in the amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars for providing a professional engineering services to develop a wastewater facilities plan. Board, this is basically what we need as we go back and forth to D C to ask for federal dollars for this S R F funds and loans. This is what's, will help us get to the end target of where we want to go and help get us on a, basically a rotating list, hopefully, to receive money for our wastewater facilities over the next few years. Wallace motion. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is, we're asking the board to consider this bid of thirty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. This involves the College Road and the Craft Road signalization project. We had committed to the residents and, uh, that we wanted to have the traffic signal at College and Craft up and running by the time school starts. That still can happen. However, the metal poles, the steel poles were not available due to supply chain issues. And at this time, we're asking the board to approve this amount so wooden poles can go up, the traffic light can get operational before school starts. Then the wooden poles will come down when the metal poles are in and the metal poles will go up. And then we'll designate the wooden poles to be used at another street project. So this is a way to keep our commitment to the citizens to get it up and running.
Hey, I, I agree with you. But what I, I, we probably have to have different poles, would you? Aren't we on the process of trying to widen the bike lane?
You took that in consideration, didn't you, for the final steel poles?
Where the, where the poles are going, they've taken.
I was saying, why don't we leave the fork, the wood bowl up and do a widening of them? And I think you'd have to have different fuel lights or longer arms.
Well, these are gonna, the steel poles are not gonna have mast arms. Uh, they're gonna still be strings. Um, so the, it's either gonna be a steel pole or it's gonna be a wood pole. Um, wood poles are available. We can, we.
Well, I understand and I, and I agree with that. I was just saying, it makes sense to me just to wait and put up the metal poles once we widen the road.
You can do that either way. We've got a contract that will be eventually coming before the board, um, to widen the road. But we also have it in our contract now for, where they could actually install. We're gonna have the base there. So if, if the board chooses to, we could move forward and have the poles replaced and have the steel poles come in, put in once they're, once they are received.
But, but are you saying the location for the steel poles, even if Craft Road is not widened at that point, it'll still accommodate the widening?
Yes.
It's had the location chosen, will accommodate when it's wider?
It will accommodate the widening.
So we won't have to do it three times? That was kind of my thought. Well, we won't have to do it three times.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, to me, it looks like you gotta set it back out in the field to make it long enough in version.
Did we expect for the metal poles to be wide enough?
Yeah.
You sp, did you expect for the metal poles to be wide enough?
I thought it would be different lengths.
So when, when does school start? August first?
Roughly.
Might as well go year round then. So July first? And Mr. Swims, the poles won't be there until the eighth? Is that?
Well, we don't know when the poles are gonna come in. That, that's the latest that they gave us. So some of the indications that we're getting when we talk to them is that they'll give you a new date. They could, they've had some that have been off by two months. We could be far later than August the eighth. We just don't know right now. We thought the safest option was to go ahead and go with the wood poles. That would keep us on schedule and allow us to have that open by the time school starts.
Then could we delay the rece, the receipt of the metal poles until such time Craft Road is widened?
I, I'm hearing that the metal poles, when they come in, regards to whether Craft Road's widened or not, will be put into place that'll accommodate the widening, right? That's what I keep hearing. If, if not, they'll tell us.
Are they going to, I'm, I'm, maybe another.
When the metal poles get put into place, will they not be put in a place that's far enough out that widening Craft Road won't impact them, where the metal poles will just stay up?
They will be wide enough. We've, we've set the base either for poles, the metal poles or the wood poles. They'll be out far enough that when we do the project, the project will not impact the location of those poles. We will not have to change the location of those poles for the widening of the project.
The poles don't have a mast.
They do not have a mast.
And then they can really set them back as far as they do, you extend the wire for us.
Yep, yep.
Right.
They're just vertical poles without an arm, so they'll stay where they are placed.
So, yes, you, you will have just straight poles and strings across there is the way the setup, uh, for this particular intersection will be.
And low hanging fruit will save nine hundred a month by not having an officer directing traffic in the mornings during school hours.
Well, that is, I mean, I, I don't see any need to spend thirty-eight thousand, but if we got no guarantee that they won't be in on August the eighth, it may be two or three months. And then we're spending money on traffic officers as well. And if we, if we had a guarantee we could get the poles in on August the eighth, I think people can wait two weeks, in my opinion.
We don't have that guarantee.
And we're spending how much, Mayor?
Nine hundred a month. Very low level, just directing traffic in the morning for about an hour and a half each morning. But the beauty of the light's gonna work twenty-four seven, whether schools open or not. Light will still be working.
I'll make a motion to accept the change order.
Motion to extend the change order by Mr. Dickerson. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Aldridge. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion, board, to leave regular session with intentions of going into executive session to discuss items one through four? Mr. Collins, motions. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're out at regular session. Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters in the airport department, personnel matter in the gas billing department, personnel matters in the police department, and personnel matters in the water maintenance department? Is there a motion to go in executive session for those items?
So move.
Ms. Henderson motion. Be, Mr. Earhart, second. Does that, does that work? All in favor? All opposed? All opposed? We are in a, we are in executive session.